2024, this meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Carr.
Good evening. I had a prepared statement tonight or an invocation, but I think, given the events of today, I just want to take a moment of silence for those that have lost their lives in the high school shooting today at the Appalachia High School in Georgia. So please bow your heads with a moment of silence. Now the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Cosden.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Or do we have a motion to adopt? The agenda is presented.
Motion to adopt.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosden. Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is the Oasis Charter School recognition. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, when we have a department in the city that receives an award or outstanding recognition, we bring up the department head to explain what they were able to accomplish. And in this regard, I'm going to ask Superintendent Ms. Collins to come up and explain and describe to the citizens what our school system has been able to achieve.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Collins.
Good afternoon, Council. Jackie Collins, Superintendent, City of Cape Coral, Oasis Charter Schools. I'm delighted here to share some great news last year from our charter schools. We, all four schools, received the grade of an A from the Florida Department of Education. It should be noted that in Lee County, only two high schools received the score, the grade of an A, Oasis High School being one. I also wanted to share with you that in the state testing data, our charter schools far exceeded the scores that the state and Lee County earned in every testing category. So English Language Arts, math, the sciences, civics, chemistry, you name it, we did exceedingly better than our peers. Two of our four schools are currently schools of excellence, which means that it's a designation when a testing category score proficiency reaches 80% or higher. We usually far exceed 80% in math at all four schools, being that we're a STEM school. Also, this year, we can boast that our graduation rate was 100%. We just had our final remaining student pass one of his tests, so we are officially at 100% graduation rate. We are also an organization of continuous improvement, and we are always looking to do better. So I wanted to share with you that our strategic plan goal under student achievement for the next three to five years will be to work to promote college and career readiness, K through 12. And what that means is that we are going to develop a systemic system where we work on increased student engagement by focused collaborative efforts. We are going to increase our level of rigor in our curriculum, and we are going to practice strategic teaching practices that will be aligned K through 12 so that all students are successful beyond high school, whether they choose to go into the workforce or college. So I do have to share that I want to thank my administrative team. They're here with me today. I have Jackie Corey, Oasis High School Principal. I have Mary Beth Gressik, Oasis Elementary South Principal. Donnie Hopper, Principal of Oasis Middle School. Oasis Elementary North Principal couldn't be here because we're on lightning dismissal. It's raining, and there's lightning, and it takes a long time to get everybody into cars, but he would like to be here. I also want to share with you that it's really not just the administrative team that contributes to our success, it's the teachers, and it's the students, and it's the bus driver, and it's getting the students to school, and it's the food service workers feeding these students so that they can be productive. It's the receptionists, it's the paraprofessionals, and it's the students, and it's the parents. I've always said that it takes a village to educate a child properly, and I think we do that efficiently and effectively in the City of Cape Coral. So thank you for your guidance. Thanks for being our partner. We continue to do good things, and we hope to become more successful in the future. So thank you.
Yes, congratulations, Ms. Collins, on not only this recognition, but what you achieved and what you've been recognized throughout the state on your accomplishments. So I know that's as a result of all your hard work and your team and their dedication. So thank you for everything that you do for the community and for the charter schools. Okay, we'll move on to next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes of the special meeting of August 13, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes of the regular meeting of August 21, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record and identify us as a collective council and not as an individual. We'll use the podium to my left, your right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin McGrail, Cape Coral resident for 34 years and a District Five resident now. This is my third attempt to bring back the Cape TV Candidates Forum that was halted by the former city manager, Rob Hernandez, before he left town and called us racist and homophobes. I first came to council in the 2022 election and asked them to please consider bringing this back. I was told there wasn't enough time, so I went away. About six months ago, I made a second attempt to come to council and say, this is very important, particularly since we're electing our council, our local representatives, in the middle of a gubernatorial election and a presidential election. The majority of the city is voting in these elections. Educating them about the individuals that are going to represent them is even more critical than it has been in the past. Six months ago, I was told that there wasn't enough time to do it in the primary, and there was too many candidates. The city manager opined that it would not cause any undue hardship or expense for city and its staff if we tried to move this forward. So now I'm here for a third attempt. Please don't have me strike out tonight. I'm asking this council to please take a leadership role to bring this back. It was very successful. Now, I have heard comments from the former city manager, because I met with him personally, Rob Hernandez, and he said, we can't do it in city council chambers. In fact, I took a little bit of offense because he called it his council chambers. It wasn't his council chambers, it's our council chambers. And I think this is a great use of our citizens' ownership of this council chambers. It gives the residents a chance to see the candidates on off-the-cuff responses. And we had great support from our newspapers, from the media. Those were the ones who worked it. And the number-one issue is we are not partisan election. These are nonpartisan elections. His big argument was it was a political rally, and it was never a political rally. They say that if you can't do it here, I will say this. Dolores Menendez had no issue with it, and she was our city attorney for many, many years. I'm telling you, it was never challenged because the residents loved it. Please bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input?
Kathleen Lopez, Beach Parkway. I'm going to try and bring up the same thing I tried to bring up last week, but ran out of time. In the city's capital improvements, five-year schedule, Objective Two states new public expenditures within the coastal high-hazard area will be limited to those for public health, safety, recreation, open spaces, public land acquisition, and the enhancement and protection of natural resources. Unless you're considering the bar recreation, no changes should be made to J.C. Park according to your own rules. It is definitely in the high coastal area. We flood all the time. We actually currently have been flooded or standing water since the little tropical storm we had, what, a month ago? And all of the daily rain is flooded. And you still want to destroy the park, raise it to the ground, spend millions of dollars in infrastructure that isn't needed now for the plants and the trees that live there. And so you can destroy the park and make it for the people who only want drinks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Kemp, and I'm a resident, as I've said before, of Cape Coral. I find it interesting, almost amusing, that after your rather pathetic vote to destroy J.C. Park, shortly thereafter, our governor faced the same type of situation. He wanted to improve various, in his thought, improve by adding amenities to various state parks. He wanted to bring in pickleball courts. He wanted to add golf courses, et cetera. Well, the park users were not in favor. The governor did not stand behind some sort of asinine explanation that he represents all of Florida, or that he's building them for people coming down to Florida. He instead listened to the protesters. He then went back and considered and withdrew his plans. It is indeed a shame that Cape Coral suffers from a lack of intelligent leadership as compared to the state. You will destroy a property, take down trees 50 years old that have served us so well. You've heard this all before, so I'm not going to repeat it. I just find it amazing that you are so insensitive, so downright insensitive to the people who use J.C. Park. That's all people talk about now. And you have no idea how many people you're affecting, because unfortunately, so many of the people that I speak to every day, they come up to me and tell me how upset they are, but you'll never see them here. Why? Because they're elderly, they have other issues, they have medical conditions, they've got things in their life that prevent them from participating in letting you know how upset they are with your decisions. But I guess you feel you know best. While the governor was faced with a similar situation, yet he judged differently. And he responded to 150 protesters, a much smaller percentage of the state than the protesters here represent compared to Cape Coral.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Podium to your right, sir, this one over here. Yes, sir.
I don't know if I'm doing this correctly. My name is David Lizenede. They are trying to vote on property on the northeast corner of Kismet and Santa Barbara, whether they want to make it commercial instead of residential. Am I in the right spot?
Is that only agenda for tonight, Mr. City Attorney or Madam City Clerk?
I just found out about this.
I believe it is.
It is?
And there will be a public input time then?
Cool.
During that process? So you have to hold your remarks until?
Roger that. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you very much.
Until we get that, unless it's an introduction. So I just want to make sure. Is that item four? Okay. All right. Any other person want to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. I just want to confirm the item that that particular?
It is apparently ordinance number 57-24, which is a public hearing regarding a future land use map from single-family to family.
So we're having a public hearing. I just want to make sure. I remember it was on the agenda, but I didn't remember if it was an introduction or not.
No, it is. It is a public hearing.
Okay. So he'll have an opportunity to speak during that time. With that being said, public input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on public input? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item 9A. I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion, or I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Carr.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number eight, Resolution 296-24.
Okay, item eight. Any other items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the other seven remaining items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the remainder.
Second. Okay. Seeing no discussion other than item eight. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, if I could, I apologize, Madam City Clerk, but it appears that, to some extent, items seven and eight are.
They are intricably intertwined. That's correct.
So would it make sense, then, to possibly pull them both in relation to whatever it is Councilmember Carr would like to speak about?
I believe that Councilmember Carr just wants to have a separate independent vote regarding agenda item number that was pulled.
Understood. Just wanted to make sure for procedure that we wouldn't be voting on something now that...
It'll be all right.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Madam City Clerk, could you start over again on that?
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item eight, Resolution 296-24. Councilmember Carr, you pulled item, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor. I only pulled it for the purposes of an independent vote for this particular item. The city attorney and I had spoken about it earlier, and that's why we didn't pull the second, number seven. So I'd just like to have the clerk call an independent vote for item eight. I have no other comment.
Okay. I'll open it up for any other council discussion first. Seeing none, I'm going to need a motion for Resolution 296-24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
No.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
No.
Shepherd.
None.
Steinke.
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on. Item B is appointments to boards and committees. We do not have anything listed. Item nine C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for city council. Is there any follow-up items for city council? We do not have anything on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine D, new business. We have Resolution 214-24, and I will turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Police Chief Tony Sizemore here, if there are any questions regarding this.
Thank you.
And our procurement manager, Wanda.
Okay.
Sorry, Wanda.
And Mayor, if I could just...
Yes, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
Yep. So the reason why this is a public hearing is in reference to the new statutory law that became effective, because we are potentially going to be approving a contractual agreement with the operator that is known as Redspeed Florida LLC. By law, we are required to hold a public hearing. We are required to have public input regarding the entry or potential entry into this agreement. And that is why we are here today for this specific matter, and that is why it is a public hearing.
All right. Thank you. I'll turn it over. Does staff have any presentation?
Well, as the city attorney just said, typically, you know, contracts are done through consent, but the state statute requires that this be a formal public hearing. Staff is available to answer any questions regarding the procurement or the enforcement and how we intend to administer this. If there are no questions in that regard, we can open up the public hearing.
I think what we'll do first off is entertain a motion for Resolution 214-24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. With that, I'll open up for council discussion. Any council discussion? Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of questions, probably for the police chief. Chief, thank you for being here. I did take the opportunity to speak with Plantation Police Department Deputy Chief there that actually participated in the selection of Redspeed, so just to give you some background. But the only couple of questions I have was a couple of things I don't know, and it's more technical, and you may or may not know the answer today, and I don't really need the answer today if you don't have it. But with regard to the license plate reader element of the system, do you know how long the retention is of that information?
I do not.
Okay. Is that something that will be available for investigative use?
It's my understanding.
Okay. Do you know the retention duration of the video? Because I believe the enforcement is done through video, not photograph.
It is done through video. I don't have the retention period or any of the specs at this time. I could get any and all of that information for you.
I know some of the concern in the public, you know, obviously, you know, privacy intrusion and so forth. I think these are a couple of questions that were asked that I didn't have the answer to, and I thought I would just see if you did. I didn't take the opportunity to ask anybody else. I don't know if the procurement manager may know that answer or...
Wanda Root, procurement manager, a lot of the items were addressed in the contract, but we also have Greg Parks, he's the Redspeed representative, and he may be able to address some of your questions if it's okay for him to come forward.
It's okay with me, it's okay with the mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Greg Parks, Redspeed, thank you for having us. Your question was how long the video, council member?
Yeah, retention duration.
Forty-five days, and by statute, or until adjudicated. And if adjudicated earlier, it's immediately destroyed then by statute.
Okay, so if someone were to challenge if retention is required beyond that, it would be retained for the case?
It's adjudicated, yes, sir.
And it does have license plate reader capability, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And is that information also stored?
It is, and it's according to Florida Record Retention Laws. And actually, it would be our ALPR partner Flock that does that, but it's followed strict statute.
Is that information available to the Police Department for investigative purposes on a regular basis?
Yes, sir.
Are you, was Plantation the first independent procurement process in Florida?
Yes.
I know you have contracts in other jurisdictions, but they were based on a contract with another state's jurisdiction?
Yeah, we have about 20 contracts in the state now, and three were by RFP, all RFPs that I'm aware of. It'd be Plantation, Hillsborough County, and Tallahassee. And Plantation process was really thorough, and it is the best terms for the city of those three. And then we have a bunch that piggybacked or solstice or other things.
Yeah, I think they're coming in droves now, based on what I've seen, so that's a good thing. I think it's a good thing for safety, for the state.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me, I mean, have you been, you're up and running in how many jurisdictions in Florida?
I think six now, and within the month of September will be several more.
What do you think our lead time will be for our city, based on your experience?
Yeah, and I believe they're all local and county roads, if I recall correctly. About 90 days.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Well, I was just wanting to clarify the lack, I guess, of a presentation. This is just kind of codified memorialized the speed camera detection system in the school zones that we're talking about ad nauseam here, something that I'm particularly proud of for this council to come together and approve. And I just wanted to thank staff and everybody that was involved in finally bringing it to the finish line. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Your Honor, I did not notate the opening and closing of the public hearing.
There is not a notation? Or there is?
I don't believe that you did, Mayor.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing on this particular.
You opened it.
On this particular item. It's not noted on my paperwork, but I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing for Resolution 214-24. So anyone wishes to speak, please come forward.
Kevin McGrail, 34-year resident of Cape Coral, District Five. The questions I had was, you know, I did the quick math here, it's $104 is explained. What are the tickets going to be? I'm sure this company gets money. So what's the ticket going to be? Do we know what the dollar value is? The second thing, and I did get a chance to chat a little with Councilman Carr, my big concern is I have experience working at North Collier Hospital for years when Naples tried a speed monitor at the intersections, and they actually caused more accidents than they prevented because people were stopping short because they were being ticketed if you went just beyond the stop line. So the question I have is what kind of parameters around this and what's the ticket price? You know, safety of the kids is paramount, but if I'm going to get a ticket for 17 miles an hour in a 15-mile zone, I'm not going to be real happy with you guys. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Any other individual wish to participate in public hearing? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Mr. Mason.
To answer, I think, two questions. First, the citation is $100, of which $60 would come to the city, and we would then pay our vendor for their turnkey services associated with operating the system. The remainder is split by statute. An additional $5 comes to us for the retention and recruitment of crossing guards. As far as the terms of being cited, I think there's a speed limit over and above whatever the posted speed limit is. And that information will be available when, you know, when it goes live. But it's not two miles over the posted speed limit. That's the important part. It's, I think it's closer to 10 miles over the posted speed limit.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Long?
That was one point I was going to hit on, is it is, in fact, 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, which is almost double the 50% of the speed limit. So if you did have a problem with that, then frankly, that wouldn't be something I'd be concerned about, but I understand your point. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion by council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for Resolution 214-24.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, nine E is personnel actions. We do not have any listed. Nine F is petitions to council. Nine G, follow-up items for city management. G1, we have the FEMA NFIP update. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had suspended that because we had turned in our documentation. Sometime last month, it became apparent that we should start supplying regular updates to the council and the community. We do have some deadlines coming up. There are some key initiatives that we are doing in order to maintain our compliance and correct any deficiencies, and so providing that communication is important as we start to approach those deadlines. And with that, I intend on turning this over to our interim emergency management director, Chief Ryan Lamb.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Emergency Management Director. As the city manager mentioned, we were notified in July that we would not be retrograded or losing our insurance discount at that time and not going into probationary status, provided we took some additional steps. And so, the first one here is that we have till September sixteenth to create a corrective action plan, and so we're very much in the process of that. We also have a deadline of November eighteenth to create what's called an SDAP, which is a substantial damage administrative procedures plan. Basically, should we have another storm event, how do we go through and make sure that we rebuild and have development back in the special flood hazard area appropriately? So, the corrective action plan focuses on the four main action item areas that FEMA has outlined. The first one is looking at program improvements, overall, some things that they thought, and I would say that after every major disaster, there's always opportunities for continuous improvement. The other one here is we're focusing on the two hundred and six addresses that were previously looked at to make sure those get finalized. We're continuing to look at some changes to the floodplain ordinance that'll be coming back in front of this council for some consideration here in the near future. One of the other things there at the end of our plan, FEMA recognized four action items that they're requesting. The, the second, the first one, as I mentioned, is those kind of programmatic improvements. The second is how we're continuing to look at the rest of our development activity across the city. So, some of the things we're doing there is we still have inspectors that'll be coming in to look at the twelve hundred addresses that the city originally requested, the weeks after Hurricane Ian occurred. So, that'll, that is still forthcoming. And we also have a list of two hundred and fifty-one addresses that'll be receiving a letter this week, that based off the claims data, they had a flood insurance claim that was more than fifty percent of the value of their structure, and we have no permit on record here with the city. So, based off of that information, they're getting a letter to ask for their compliance. And compliance is the goal, is that we want them to apply for the necessary permits, turn in the necessary substantial damage and substantial improvement packets, and get those things turned into grant compliance. The third is continue to leverage our code enforcement arm. Fourth is the creation of the SDAP. And then the fifth is one that the city elected to add on, on our own, and that is talk about all of the things that we're doing to improve flooding and resilience across our community, because we are doing a number of things from watershed planning to master planning to making sure that we have a better environment for our community into the future. We have additional letters that are going to be going out to other homeowners based off of some of the findings that FEMA had. Again, the goal here is going to give people sufficient time to work with us to gain compliance. Other things that we've done is we've also redone the SISD packet, what's, people have known, come to known as the FEMA packet. That's now live. That change has gone out, and we're working with our industry partners on that as well. And so, we're working through a number of these, these processes. We meet weekly with FEMA right now. They're onsite every Tuesday morning with us, and they're working through this plan with us. So, when we turn it in at the end, we're not turning in a document that they've never seen before. They're working with us every step of the way, and as we go, they might, you know, give us a little bit of nudge. So, when we get this plan completed, it's something that they can take to FEMA headquarters and say, we've worked with them, this is in compliance. Being somebody that's been boots on the ground, they can advocate for us at that point. But again, I just want to reiterate that at this point, we're going to hit our deadlines. I believe, thoroughly believe that we're doing everything that we can with our dedicated team to retain this discount for our residents and comply with all the requests that FEMA has asked. I'll stay by for any questions.
Thank you for the update. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, item ten is ordinance from resolution. Ten A is public hearing, quasi-judicial hearings. We do not have any listed tonight. Ten B is legislative public hearings, first of which is Resolution 272-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 272-24, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the funding of water, wastewater, and irrigation utility system distribution facilities through the imposition of non-advalorem special assessments. Ratifying and confirming Resolution Number 250-24 as amended herein, determining that certain real property is specially benefited by the distribution facilities, approving and confirming the method of assessing the costs of the distribution facilities against the real property specially benefited thereby, establishing other terms and conditions of the assessments, approving the assessment roll, imposing assessments upon all tax parcels described in the assessment roll, providing the method of collection, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Mark Mason, interim Assistant City Manager. This is a contribution native construction. It was a delinquent account pursuant to Ordinance 5618. We have a, you have the authority to convert this over to an assessment, and it is one property with two delinquency accounts on it. And so, by adopting this ordinance, it will convert over to an assessment and be put on the tax bill.
Thank you. I now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 272-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 272-24?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Ordinance 55-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 55-24, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial activity center to commercial slash professional land use for property described as all of block twenty-five fifty-three B, Unit thirty-seven, Cape Coral, property located at seven twenty-three Nelson Road, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. For the record, Candace Ward, Planner with the City Planning Division, and this is going to be Ordinance 55-24. The applicant is going to be the City of Cape Coral. The property owner is currently Kenneth Backstrand. The property is currently roughly about one point five four acres. It is one solid parcel in itself. The location is seven twenty-three Nelson Road. It does currently have urban services in the transition area, and the request is to update the future land use, um, future land use map, excuse me, from Commercial Activity Center, or CAC, to Commercial slash Professional, so the designation would be CP. If you can see, there's a red dot right here in the very middle, so you can kind of get a general idea of where it's located. And here, it is on the screen, so it is at the intersection of Nelson Road and Tropicana Parkway West. The existing future land use classification of CAC is going to be on the left, and then the proposed future land use classification of Commercial slash Professional is going to be on the right-hand side. As for the comprehensive plan analysis, the future land use element policy one point one three, commercial nodes, was reviewed, and it, we did, staff did find that the subject site is at the intersection of two major streets. As noted before, it was Nelson Road and Tropicana Parkway West. Point two is that the site has a one-to-one ratio of width to depth. The increased depth generally enables the site to accommodate parking, buffering, landscaping, and stormwater treatments of the site. And point three is that the subject site is considered a commercial node. As for policy one point one four, commercial siting guidelines of the comprehensive plan, point one is the proposed amendment meets four of the guidelines. It does meet the major intersection criteria, compactness, adequate depth, and ownership pattern criteria, and it partially meets one other guideline, which would be intrusion. The proposed amendment fails to meet three guidelines, and those would be integration, assembly, and access. Based on policy one point one four, an amendment to the commercial slash professional future land use classification is supported. It is noted that there is no, not a specific number of guidelines that are required to be met to support the future land use classification change. However, since the site meets more than half of the eight guidelines, and partially meets the fifth, staff finds that the subject area is a viable candidate for the CP change. A little bit of the impact assessment analysis that was conducted between the CAC and then the CP future land use classification. For the CAC, which is currently what it's zoned as, or future land used as, excuse me, it allows for a maximum of sixteen dwelling units per acre. Residential is allowed in the CAC. When it does change to Commercial Professional, there would be no residential uses allowed. The CAC does allow for a maximum FAR, or floor area ratio, of two. As for the Commercial Professional, residential development is not allowed, so we wouldn't have any dwelling units per acre to worry about. And then the future, or I'm sorry, excuse me, the maximum FAR is one. We are going to assume that the site was developed under the maximum allowable entitlements when reviewing the assessment. And then the summary would be, under the proposed CP designation, only non-residential uses will be allowed. And then point two is the development of the site under the proposed CP future land use would be that there would be a reduction in school impacts, water and sewer demand, solid waste demand, and the number of peak hour trips. The summary of this is going to be, under the current CAC, eighty-five percent of the site would be devoted to multifamily uses. Under the proposed Commercial slash Professional, only commercial development would be allowed. And the location is at a major intersection. It's got the property depth, it's got multiple frontages, and it's got high visibility, rendering the site better suited for commercial uses only, and not a combination of multifamily and commercial uses. Staff finds that potentially sharing part of the site with multifamily uses would represent a missed opportunity, given the city's deficiency in commercial lands along a major corridors. Staff does recommend approval, and then Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval, and that hearing was August seventh of 2024. As for correspondence, staff only did receive one phone call regarding this, and they were in support. That caller did not think that multifamily was going to be an appropriate area for this. And I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 55-24, please come forward.
Lori Lehman. And I'm just confused. One minute, you're saying that it is going to be zoned professional, commercial. Then you're talking about multifamilies. And you're saying that multifamilies can share the property? Am I hearing it right? Or am I...
Do you want me to respond, or do I have to wait until it's over?
Yeah, you can go ahead and respond, because that's clearly not the case.
Okay. So, for the current zoning of the future land use for CAC, Commercial Activity, it would allow multifamily uses. So, currently, it would allow the multifamily uses. We're proposing to change it to Commercial slash Professional, and at that time, it would not allow for any multifamily or residential uses.
Because I thought your last line said, you know, multifamily would be able, and that's why I was saying, wait a minute, one minute, you're saying one? Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing for Ordinance 55-24? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion regarding Ordinance 55-24?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Uh, Councilmember Carr?
Just had two questions. It's a city, and we're the applicant, the city bringing this forward. Is the, I assume the owner is on board with this change?
Yes, they are as well.
And the only other question was, is you talk about partially meeting intrusion guideline. Can you explain what intrusion is, the guideline for that, and why is it partially meets that?
Yes. So, staff did find that because it is at the intersection of Tropicana and Nelson Parkway in that area, it is CAC, but to the south, and then then to the east is currently zoned single family. So, we do, we would be somewhat encroaching on residential uses that are nearby, but they do have a local road to the east that's separating them from the single family. And then to the south, there is a twenty-foot platted alleyway that would also provide some separation, but not a full road length separation.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to Ordinance 56-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 56-24, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending Article Five Development Standards, Chapter Four Marine Improvements, Section 5.4.7 Boat Canopies and Sun Shelters of the Land Development Code of the City of Cape Coral, Florida regarding boat canopies, providing for severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe at this point in time, this is here for a second reading. However, there are some additional modifications that need to occur. We've spoken with the SD staff. We ask that this matter be open and continued till the September eighteenth regular council meeting.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to reflect that.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. I'll hold on a minute. Councilmember Welsh just popped his light on. You okay?
Yeah.
Alright, good. Go ahead.
Your Honor, for the motion, can I confirm that the continuation is to the nine eighteen regular meeting at four thirty in council chambers?
Correct.
Second agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 57-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 57-24, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from single family slash multifamily to Commercial slash Professional land use for property described as all of block twenty-two ninety-seven B, Unit thirty-six, Cape Coral subdivision, property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Santa Barbara Boulevard North and Kismet Parkway, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chad. Good evening.
Alright. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City Planning Division. This is Ordinance 57-24. This is a city-initiated application, pretty similar to the one you just heard a few minutes ago from Candace. This location is at the northeast intersection of Kismet Parkway and Santa Barbara Boulevard. It's a little over one acre, one and a half acres in size. It does not have utilities, and it is currently within, I believe, north five or six, so you're looking at several years before there are utilities in place for this property. So, the surrounding area is a collection of undeveloped parcels and single-family homes, although this is bordered, you know, to the east and to the south by two arterial or collector roadways. And then the, the request is for a future land use map changed from single-family, multifamily to Commercial Professional, and this was born out of a study that city planning staff to commercial professional. And this was born out of a study that city planning staff did to identify areas within the northeast, northwest parts of Cape Coral that were suitable for commercial development that had not been changed as of yet. So the existing future land use on the left-hand side of your screen is single-family, multifamily, and then the proposed is for commercial professional at this major intersection. We looked at this per our comprehensive plan. The proposed designation is commercial professional, which has a maximum FAR of one point zero. If this was developed to its maximum, potentially be looking at a little under seventy thousand square feet of developable space. However, we would presume that in the future, it would be developed at a lower square footage than this. And there are no residential units allowed within the CP designation. We also find that this site is at the intersection of two four-lane roadways, so this qualifies as a commercial node. We looked at the commercial siding guidelines. We found that the site is consistent with five guidelines, major intersection, adequate depth, compactness, assembly, and then ownership pattern. The site is not consistent with one guideline, which is integration, since there is no existing commercial development within this area on this site. And it's partially consistent with two guidelines, which are intrusion and access. Staff notes that policy one point fourteen does not require an amendment to meet a certain number of threshold of these for an approval or denial. And then just our quick analysis of this is that it's a undeveloped, unsubdivided tract with one owner at the direct intersection of two major roadways. Northeast Cape Coral has a significant lack of commercial opportunities. So this site could possibly provide for an increased tax base, services for the community, and then also some job opportunities as well. And there's also an ample supply of residential land in that nearby area. Our recommendation is approval of this change. We have received one full call of general inquiry. That was from a representative for the owner, just asking what the what the reason for the change is, and they were okay with it at that time with that. And then the P and Z folks also recommended approval of this change. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-four, please come forward. To the right there, sir.
Mayor, thank you.
Just state your name to start.
My name is David Lizembe. My house was actually in that picture of the map and stuff.
Can we put that picture back back up, please?
Oh, no. My bad. Okay. I'm concerned with the growing businesses, commercial businesses over there. Commercial businesses equal more crime. It's nice and quiet over there. There is so much construction on Santa Barbara and Kismet right now. When would that be started? Because this Kismet and Santa Barbara stuff is not going to be over for a hot minute. There is, that is butted up next to houses with no access road or anything between the houses and the commercial property. I don't know how this goes, but I personally, as somebody that lives right there, would not like to see this happen. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-four, please come forward?
Hi, my name is Julia Tari. I just have a question. Why is it the city puts this up for re-zoning instead of the owner of the property? Do you have to, who answers that? You?
Well, we can have staff.
I was just curious.
We were, when we did, we did a planning study to identify areas that were suitable for commercial according to our comprehensive plan standards and the Land Development Code. And our our decision to bring this forward is just to sort of help this and speed this along to possibly prevent this kind of site from being developed as residential when staff found that, as long as council had agreed as well, that it was more suitable for commercial development. So just trying to, just to kind of keep, you know, do further future planning efforts for the city so that when the time came, when utilities were available, that this site would be set aside for commercial and not residential development.
So the landowner himself or herself, they don't have an option. You you go to them and say, we're just going to change the zoning? Is that how that works?
Yes, there are Florida state statutes that allow, that give cities and counties sort of the the power to enact these kinds of changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other individuals wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-four? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any counsel discussion? Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Question I asked the other, on the other parcel, does the owner agree with this change, Chad?
We spoke with a representative for the owner, and they did not indicate any opposition at that time when we spoke with them.
Okay. The sun trail, is it planned to go down in front of this parcel in the future? Do you know that?
I don't believe that it extends this far east, although I'm not an expert in the sun trail of where, I know the areas that are further along to the west, they've already started construction on that. I do, I don't believe that it's going to go this far east, however.
Mr. Chisholm, do you know the answer to that question? It's kind of relevant to this particular parcel, because it would go right across the front of it, which may be a particular, you know, an access point for a commercial development in the future. I I thought it went that far, Chad. That's the reason I ask.
And I, and I could be wrong. Like I said, I wasn't really involved in the planning process. I know, like, we know where it is further to the west, but I wasn't, I'm not entirely sure of where it starts on this eastern portion of the city.
That would weigh into my decision-making if we can come up with that answer. I don't know if it's possible right now. And I apologize for not asking it earlier, but it didn't, I didn't clue into it till just now when I was reviewing it again. But all right, I'll move on from that. The gentleman that spoke, are you the property sir that abuts this actual parcel to the north?
Negative.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinke?
Yes, thank you. I I believe the sun trail is supposed to eventually make it all the way over to forty-one, isn't it?
I thought so. That's my understanding as well. And this, I mean, I understand too, this future land use change, you know, the development of this may not occur for many, many years. But if the sun trail is planned for that location, I don't know, I mean, to me, it would be impactful for many reasons, but.
So that wasn't the reason I had my my button on. But, you know, the, as I, as I think about this, the number one thing commercial developer needs is utilities. And this portion of our city is sadly served by commercial utilities, whether it be drugstore or filling station, the type of, the type of business that would be there. So if if utilities and, you know, had been available, more than likely, these locations like this would have been developed by now. All this does, seeing no opposition by the owner, is is to, is to preserve its ability to do that when, when the utilities get there. And so all of the homes in the neighborhood there then will have an amenity, you know, to serve them. And this, the way I see this action is just to make sure that that property is there to do that when a commercial entity, you know, will be able to do it when utilities get there. So that's kind of where I am on it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you. I'm sure we have staff answering this, but my understanding is that the sun trail was Del Prado to Burnsway.
It is, correct. Yes, we just, I just, we just saw the sort of location map, and it would, there would, the sun trail would go along the front of this property.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights on, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
No.
Steinke?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Tennessee Introductions. We have Resolution two eighty-eight dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution two eighty-eight dash twenty-four, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the McAdo Court right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, block thirty-one, Cape Coral, Unit One, Part Two, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lots twenty-five and twenty-six, block thirty-one, Cape Coral, Unit One, Part Two, property located at fifty-three sixty McAdo Court and fifty-three forty-five McAdo Court, providing for an effective date. The public hearing will be September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution two eighty-nine dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution two eighty-nine dash twenty-four, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lots twenty-four through thirty-four, block twenty-three seventy-three, Cape Coral, Unit Thirty-five, property located at three ten northeast, second place, providing for an effective date. The public hearing will be September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance sixty-two dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance sixty-two dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, approving the second amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Cape Coral, Florida and PPW Cape Coral LLC for the lease of property owned by the city of Cape Coral, Florida, located at four hundred Santa Barbara Boulevard, known as Sun Splash Water Park, authorizing the mayor to execute the second amendment to the lease agreement for Sun Splash Water Park, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, item elevens reports. Councilmember Carr, report.
I have no report.
Councilmember Cosden?
No report.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I guess I, I did want to bring up what Mr. McGrath had to say about the city debates. I know at the time, there was some discussion about whether they should be held in these chambers or not. And I believe the city manager was interested at one point, and he received advice from our city attorney that might be problematic to have such an event that might be organized by staff in council chambers, which, which I understood. And I believe consensus may have been taken among city council members that are in individual meetings, and there didn't appear to be an appetite to have an event like that in chambers that wasn't necessarily run by staff, but was organized by possibly the news media or somebody else. Obviously, our production staff, because the advantage of having such an event in chambers was that the entire city could watch it, which isn't the case for most of the events that we have. So publicly, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't consensus from this council about somehow organizing an event in here where staff wasn't involved, except for the TV production team, maybe police officers, to have what used to happen in these chambers for many years was a debate for the general election involving the media asking questions and a member of the media moderating the event. But to maybe satisfy Mr. McGrath's curiosity, if there was, if the consensus has changed or not changed, that we do not believe that an event should be held in these chambers without staff participation, you know, or or do we? That's all I'm asking. If we don't believe this is the place where such an event should take place, there's other, there's other venues with, where you would have limited, limited ability for the entire city to see it, but it certainly could happen in other places. But I thought publicly, I would just like to get a quick consensus if that was even a possibility for council. That's all.
Thank you. I guess on that note, before we move any further, does council have a desire to have a discussion or to weigh in on that particular topic? I know we've had our one-on-ones with the city manager most recently when this was asked before, and city manager advised us there was not a consensus amongst council to do that. So I guess now's the time to express what what your desire is. My desire was, I think there's plenty of opportunity throughout the city to hold these meetings. I don't feel personally that that is the responsibility of the city here in the council chambers. There's a host of other venues that could be provided, that are provided, actually. I think some of the candidates here today can attest that you've been to a variety of forums and participated many times throughout the city and those. I think that's something that our organizations do extremely well. I understand that it may be for a benefit because, and the only reason I can see why someone wanted here is because they could utilize KTV. But I think that that could still be utilized at a, at a different venue, and it didn't have to be here in council chambers. We don't rent this or utilize this for any other event unless it's city business, and I think it should continue to move forward in that fashion. So that's what I expressed to the city manager. I stand by my decision that I made several months ago, and that's my position on it. If you like, maybe we can just go down the line. And to me, it's a simple yes or no, or if you want to express why you want to have it or why you don't want to have it, that that's okay too. Councilmember, well, you want to go through the lights? Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because I'm up for reelection, I didn't want to be in a position of of being for it, because I think there would be a backlash if I was for it. And I don't, and if I, also, if I was against it, I would probably get the same situation. So I wanted to stay out of it because I'm up for reelection.
Well, as long as we don't have a tie-in vote, I guess you'll, you'll be okay. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. I'm not opposed to the concept, but I'm not convinced that this event would be so vital to the election that people wouldn't know who to vote for unless they watched this thing. Because I've done this twice, and it's questions, it's the same questions that you get asked at every forum. So I would be okay with it if that's the way we wanted to go. But I'm not convinced it's the answer to everything.
I, I believe that council chambers is for city business, and I don't think that campaigning is city business. I ran two years ago, and there were plenty of venues to go out and see the people in a variety of different locations where they didn't have to come here. I could go see them. Our local newspaper does questions every week that the, those that are campaigning get to answer to, and that's kind of a debate forum where they're, they're asked to give their own opinions. So there's a variety of other forums. I think, I think council chambers is meant for city business and not, not, whether it's, whether it's an election or any other type of public use, it's not for that. So I would say no.
Quick question, Mr. City Manager. My understanding, we do have a policy on campaigning here on city grounds. Is that correct? An example, I know we mentioned to one candidate, it came to the podium with a shirt on, and we asked for that individual to remove.
It's a, it's a decorum policy that is in the council rules.
Right. So my understanding is, we have a policy in place where there's no campaigning here in council chambers. But then we want to have a candidate election forum that's kind of counterintuitive to our own policy that we have. So that's another reason why I was against having, having the forums.
Yeah, I feel the same as many others. I think there's other opportunities. Shoot, I'm still burnt out from all the events that I attended two years ago. So I don't know that exposure is the answer. I don't think that that's, that's a situation here, that there's, this is the only opportunity for exposure. But more importantly, I think, to some of the points touched on by others, I don't want to get in the habit of starting to pick and choose who and what we allow in the chambers and for what purposes, because it's, it's a whole nother kind of issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not for it. I know when I ran, we had it here four years ago, but that was also coming right out of COVID, and there weren't many venues open and available as there are today. So there were no, no real forums being held to where people could see. So the use of KTV was big then because everyone was home safeguarding from COVID. So with the amount of everyone being open and the, and the amount that I attended as well, I don't think it's the proper place in council chambers. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, I think in the twelve or so years when it did happen in these chambers, it was, it was all about points of information. And typically with the, the news meeting, the news meeting media, depending on how they're portrayed these days, a lot of the forums now are, could be political clubs. Some might think that their questions are slanted a bit towards one particular party or another, whereas with the news media, it offered you an opportunity, I think, to, for more in-depth questions. The topics could be the same, but the questions might be worded a little bit differently. So I just, you know, I just wanted to get it on the record with everybody about, about the events that have happened here. And yeah, that's, that's all.
Thank you. I told Mr. McGrath, my response to Mr. McGrath was that because I could potentially benefit by it, like Mr. Shepherd said, that I wasn't comfortable being the champion of bringing it forward. I would not oppose it, but obviously, I don't think the support is there. But I know I had some good history in the past. Mr. McGrath gave me that in a meeting I had with- Mr. McGrath gave me that in a meeting I had with him, but as I told him, I didn't want to be the champion of bringing it forward. So, but I will not oppose it if it were to get to the vote of passing. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds like the consensus is the same as it was on our one-on-one meetings. Councilmember Long, you're next, as far as reports. Councilmember Shepherd? Report? Councilmember Steinkie?
No report.
Councilmember Welsh?
No report.
Just a few things for me quickly. Some is my report, some is some housekeeping items that I think we need to discuss. First off, as far as reports, this morning, participated in the pet of the month filming and also filming of the mayor's message, so that'll be out soon. But more importantly, myself, city manager, had a meeting today with Army Corps of Engineers, which was, in my opinion, extremely productive. I think we were trying to outline, moving forward, two projects that I know that we've been waiting some time for. One is the yacht club and one is the chiquita lock. So I think it was a very productive meeting, and I think we'll see some movement in those in the near future. So we'll wait and see. I know Mr. City Manager's got staff working with Army Corps on a few follow-up items that they requested. So it was, I think, a very productive meeting. The other thing I wanted to bring up, we have our city auditor, who typically is involved in the same format that our general employees are as far as pay increases, which is October 1st. So one of the things that I wanted to suggest as far as her evaluation is September 20th, we asked her to complete a self-evaluation and then give that to all of council by the end of the business day on September 20th. September 27th, which is again, I believe, on a Friday. We, as a city council, will prepare our evaluation, give it to city council, I'm sorry, to the Connie Griglin in our office, to compile the data, just like the past scenarios with the city attorney and the city manager, and then come back. October 2nd, we have a regular meeting on that particular day, and I think we could have a special meeting to discuss that on the October 2nd at 3:00, if we have a special meeting. In addition to that, since we're there, we're having a discussion, we have our own staff members in our office, three individuals, that we need to do the same process for. So I think that we could possibly kill two birds with one stone, use those same dates. My only caveat to that is, you know, I've been here for seven years now. We have an executive administrative assistant. Ms. Williams is assigned to Councilmember Welsh, Councilmember Long, Councilmember Carr, and Councilmember Cosdun. And we have Ms. Griglin, who's an executive administrative assistant to myself, Councilmember Steinkie, Councilmember Shepherd, and Councilmember Hayden. The only change that I want to see if this council agrees to, I have very little interaction with Ms. Williams. I go directly to my executive administrative assistant. And I'm sure, for the most part, each one of us are probably reporting directly to either Ms. Williams or Ms. Griglin for a majority of their needs. Now, if one of them aren't available, as we all know, we can go to the other one. But for evaluation purposes, I just wanted to ask, do you want the four council members that are assigned to Ms. Williams do her evaluation and do the average and that sort of thing that we normally do? And we have the other four council members who report to Ms. Griglin do her evaluation. I personally believe that's better. Why am I evaluating an employee that I have very little interaction? And even though I'm the office manager, I have a little bit of interaction. So that's just a scenario that we could do differently, that we've never done in the past. Or we can all just do the evaluations like we had on all the employees. Now, one thing that I spoke with Ms. Griglin about, since she is the assistant office manager, she has more direct contact with James in our office. We all could do that evaluation, or we can direct Ms. Griglin, who's the assistant city manager, since that employee reports directly to her, do his evaluation. So I just wanted to kind of throw a couple scenarios out to you to see what the desire of the council is on how to do our personnel's evaluation. So with that, I think the city auditor, that's pretty straightforward, but I'd like to get some feedback on our employees, how this council feels they would be more comfortable moving forward with those evaluations. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think, first off, I think I don't have as much direct dealings with Lisa as I may with James, but you know, Lisa schedules things for me, so I have enough contact with her that I believe I could also participate in that evaluation besides James. I think my bigger concern is having a public meeting where we're evaluating internal staff, people that aren't under public scrutiny, like the city auditor, city attorney, city manager. We had a situation come up a few years ago where a council member criticized one of the staff members, and I think the words used were, "She should be fired." That bothered me a lot, because that, you know, that particular employee then was facing public embarrassment at that time, and I thought that was wrong. I have no problem with evaluating each of the people, giving it to Connie, let her put together the score. She's the manager of those people, as well as her input of those, and then proceeding with their evaluations in that way. And, you know, whatever would transpire from there, from any monetary amounts as well. But I would really like to get them out of a public scenario.
Yeah, my goal was to put them in the...
I think it's wrong.
Lump them with the special meeting on the October 2nd, 3:00, that particular meeting will be held in the conference room 220?
It'd still be a public meeting.
We have no choice. We have to be in a public.
Well, that's what I mean. I want to remove those, the assistants, and let the department have, and let the manager, which would be Connie, have their review with them each, based on the evaluations that we provided, so that we don't have them in a public setting. It wouldn't be any different than internal staff meeting with their department head out of a, out of a public setting.
The unfortunate part, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, it's our obligation to set the percentage of what the increase may or may not be. So there's no way that we can have a meeting, other than a public meeting, to discuss exactly what that pay increase would be.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to work Connie more into a managerial role with this, on what the discussion...
She doesn't have, in my opinion...
What the discussion might be.
She doesn't have the right to make that decision, I don't think, Mr. City Attorney.
Well, you are correct, Mayor, that if you, if more than two of you meet, it's going to have to be a public meeting. Could there be another mechanism where you would not run a file of Chapter 286, which is sunshine law? Possibly. I just, you know, I don't want to...
All right. Here's what I'm trying to avoid, okay? I understand their salary increases would have to be set during a public meeting or by ordinance or whatever, but that could happen post-review time, right? There could be something brought before council that these particular employees are going to get a CPI increase, or whatever it might be, or a merit increase, whatever it might be, without having discussions about, during those particular meetings, about what their strengths or weaknesses might be per their evaluation. That's the only thing I'm trying to avoid. I think the compensation part of it can be handled without specifically bringing up particular names of people, as we might do with other contracts that we have with the union. We're not necessarily mentioning a particular position or person. We're just setting an amount based on that particular position. The only thing I'm trying to avoid here is criticism of an internal employee at a public meeting. That's what I'm trying to avoid. If, you know, if my colleagues disagree with that, that's fine. It, you know, it bothered me a few years ago when it happened, but I think there might be another way that we can take care of the compensation part of it without bringing up individual names.
Just a quick question as a follow-up, Mr. City Attorney. Their evaluation that we fill out and we submit, that is open to the public records law, correct?
It would become a public record. That is correct.
The records are anyway.
Now, the news media, the news media has typically attended these meetings and were free to write about any criticism or what.
You know how the news media is, Councilmember Hayden?
I know, I keep bringing that up tonight. Why is that? There is, and there may be no way around it. It, you know, I'm trying to avoid possible embarrassment of internal employees who usually don't face public scrutiny. If there's no way to do that, that's fine. I just wanted to present my concerns about this. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. I agree with what Councilmember Hayden is saying with regard to the public scrutiny and those particular employees being subjected to that. It goes beyond what they should be exposed to, in my opinion, if it is negative. I mean, obviously, positive accolades is a great thing to bring out in public, right? Negatives are always bad to have in public. Maybe a solution, and I didn't realize that Connie is considered in a supervisory role within the office. I think that somewhat simplifies it, at least from a management perspective with our city organization. She could conduct the interviews on both, I mean, the reviews on both. We could become more of a supervisory role and review her review of the staff member. We would still have the ability to interject and make comment about any of the subjects we'd like within her evaluation or their evaluation, but Connie would effectively be forwarding it to us for approval. She doesn't, I mean, she interacts with both of them every single day, quite, you know, a lot more than we do, and can probably witness more of their behaviors a lot more than we do. That's just my opinion. And if she is truly in a supervisory role, that's not outside the realm of possibility, and I'm sure she can get some guidance from our HR department if she needed it about how to do that. But I would recommend that we just become in a supervisory role or a management role of those employees in kind of the second level of approval. We would all have the same type of approval for that evaluation that Connie would do. And I would go as far as to say that she could, you know, recommend a percentage, you know, increase for the two subordinates that could be passed along as well for consideration. It might just make it cleaner. That way, we're not interjecting eight opinions about various things and numbers and having that public discussion, I think that Councilmember Hayden would like to avoid, for the benefit of our staff members. So that's just an idea, and I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Ilchison could assist with that in some way, if she needed guidance to complete that. But I think we can make it where it works, where we get forwarded the review, we evaluate it and approve what's effectively been done already. That'd be my suggestion.
Just a question on your comment. That would work well with the two employees under her. How do we, how do we work with her? Because she can't self-evaluate herself.
Correct, and I think we can accomplish that probably more simply than doing all three, because of the, you know, our removed element of the management side. But I would even go so far as to say that, you know, if she's your direct assistant, maybe you bring it forward. I wouldn't have any problem with that. I certainly don't interact with her to the extent that you do. I don't know what the answer is to that. I realize that she can't give her own raise or recommend her own raise, like some of her other staff members do, but I would expect it to be in line with the subordinates, would be my, you know, idea, but we would have to discuss that in public, but I don't know that that would be part of the review process. The review effectively would already be done, I think, when we look at the paperwork, and then we can make a recommendation for the percent increase and debate that at the appropriate time. Just trying to keep, keep the review element out of the public. I think that's what Councilman Hayden would like, and I would agree with that concept.
Okay. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. I would agree to, you know, the people that deal with Lisa directly. I don't ever really deal with James, so if we could have Connie do James's review, I would support that. I would also support doing a review for Connie if needed, because I do work with Connie, and also for Lisa. But if it's, I'm okay with just doing one for Lisa as well, because that is who I see the most time with and spend the most time with, and... Yeah, does that answer your three questions? Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for keeping it the way it is, because I don't think it's broken. And I think making changes might introduce some problems that we'll learn down the road. I also think that certain individuals with certain positions, and I'll use our city attorney as an example, is yes, I would not want to evaluate him and talk bad about him in public, but he understands when he applied for that job, what comes with that job. And I believe that certain jobs in the city, people understand, you know, what comes along with that position. Not saying that I'm comfortable for doing certain things, but I think things are set up in a way for a reason, and I don't, I don't think, I don't see a break in the, in the way we do it to, to make us have a reaction of change. I just, I think it works the way it is. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I too agree that the actual review itself and discussion around performance ought to be done privately, not in a, not in a public forum, although certainly the financial component of it and what we would talk out to agree or not, you know, would, has to be in public. So I think the performance piece of it can be done in private. Have no problem with Connie delivering the information that we provide to her, to them, and how it all averaged out, and then, and then we can, in a public forum, discuss the actual numerical ratings and where we want to go with that. As it relates to who I evaluate, I absolutely spend more time with Connie than I do with Lisa or with James. I'm more equipped to do a thorough review of Connie than I am of Lisa and James, but I do interact with them enough to have some input there. So I wouldn't say that I don't have any, but definitely there's a weighting towards the time that I spend and that Connie spends with me, so I'd be, I'd be okay separating it out if that's the, if that's the majority rule.
Okay. Councilmember Cosdun, I think you are the only individual we haven't heard from.
So I would like to, if we can, keep the criticisms and those things out of the public process. So that's my big thing, but otherwise, I don't have any super strong opinion about this.
I guess, I think what we could probably do is we do our evaluations, we average them out, we have our one-on-one discussions. If there are any shortcomings with any of the individuals, we each have that opportunity on a one-on-one basis to have that discussion. Once the written evaluations are completed, then we do the average, and then the average could come back to us on the meeting of the 20th, and our only real discussion would be the compensation element, not necessarily, because we've already, would have already had the opportunity, not only to do a written evaluation, but having an opportunity to meet with them individually, to either highlight their, and give them accolades with their performance over the year, or if there's any concerns, we can express them at that time. No need to do that in a public... No need to do that in a, a public meeting on a subsequent basis. So then we'll have the average evaluations, and then we can have a discussion on the compensation only at that time. I think if that's, sounds like what I'm hearing, most of the council wants to go that path, I'm fine with that. I think we still have to figure out, are we doing, evaluating everybody? Are we only doing our four that we're assigned to? Maybe letting Connie do James? So I think we still got to maybe go down the line and try to figure out what the answer is pertaining to that.
You mentioned a meeting on the 20th. What, you weren't-
I'm sorry, the-
Second? The October 2nd?
On the, on October 2nd at 3:00 P.M.
Okay.
Councilmember Cosden, you want to just, we'll go down the list. Do we want to evaluate all three individuals? Do we want to do one-on-one and Connie do one? What's your preference?
In my opinion, Connie should be the one reviewing James, because that's a unique position, and I think that we should be reviewing the person that we work with. So I would review Lisa.
Okay.
We do the four and four and have Connie do James's evaluation.
Okay.
I want, I'd just rather stick to the way it is.
Okay. And I'll do, I think, four and four and Connie doing James?
Yeah, four, yeah, that's the same.
Yep.
So I would do James as well, since I work with James?
Well, everybody else said four and four, you're executive administrative assistant, and Connie would evaluate James.
Okay. That's, that's where we're at, and then if we want to-
Four and four, and that's where the majority is at this point.
Okay.
We have yourself and Councilmember Carr to go.
Yeah, I was just looking at if there's anything that we want to contribute to any of the evaluations, we just give it to Connie?
Yeah, I, I-
I don't know. We need to do full evaluations. If there's something we want particularly mentioned-
I think each one of us have, have an opportunity to-
Then that's fine.
To relay anything, the misgribling that we feel would be applicable.
All right.
Councilmember Carr?
I'm good. Four, four, and one.
Okay. Phew. Okay, I think we got there.
I have a question-
Yes, sir.
That's a little different. Are, are we going to receive any kind of tools, compensation tools? What I mean, like references for what they do in their position that shows what somebody in that position, you know, the scale? Because we are working on, you know, bringing in all the city employees up to the 75 percentile, so we use a set of tools to determine, to help us work with what people should make in certain positions. Is there any kind of tools that could be supplied to us when we evaluate them to, to make sure we're staying in, in a fairness, you know, just being fair to, to not just them as employees, but fair as one of the employees of the, the whole organization?
Okay. Just a quick question, Mr. City Manager. I know in the union negotiations and discussions, there are cities that are agreed to as far as comparables. Right now, I know you have the fire and you have the General's Union. Are they utilized in the same comparable cities, or are they using different comparables?
Each unit has different, there are some that are across the board or similar, but they're not all identical across all three labor groups, because they're, we, we try to pick like cities with like, so some cities don't have a fire department. So for example, Port St. Lucie, that's not going to be in the fire one. So there are some similarities, but not, but not all. We do have a, a group that we use for non-bargaining.
Well, what we could do, if, if you like, and the council likes, is the top 10 cities, state of Florida, you have five strong mayors and five city manager form of governments. What we could do possibly is get the data for the five city manager form of governments of the top five cities, and we can see what the executive assistants in those offices that report directly to the council, we could possibly try to get that data between now and October 2nd, and at least we could have that information to look at, if that's a desire of the council collectively as a whole. And I, I'll try to get that together, or at least try to work with our HR department. Maybe they can get it together for us.
I like it.
Everybody okay with that?
I just don't, why would we change the cities that, we already have a bank of cities that are being utilized for comparisons? Why would we change that? You said top five. Is that, you mean, top five in population? I don't, what do you mean?
Yeah, there's top 10 cities in the state of Florida.
Yeah.
I mean, we could sit here and try to figure out-
But is that who we use for the, what the city manager just saying? I mean, for the general?
Well, the unions, each union, they get together and they look at, between the city and the unions get together and they try to come up with their five comparable cities.
Right.
Each union has a different set of, if I understand the city manager correctly, each union has a different set of comparable cities.
Right.
I'm sure they want a certain amount of cities that probably has a higher compensation, and the city comes up with theirs, and then together they, they, they have a compromise of the top five, so.
Right. I guess just administrative positions within our city are, I mean, they're similar to our staff downstairs. I don't know. I mean, I'm just wondering why we deviate from those cities that are already established. I mean-
I was just trying to-
Yeah, I just think it might skew, I mean, honestly, the top five cities may yield a higher number, which, you know-
Well, I can tell you, I'm trying to remember offhand who they are. You got Tallahassee, who's a size city, very similar to ours.
Right.
Port, Port St. Lucie. I want to say Fort Lauderdale, and I can't recall who the other two are offhand. City manager form of governments.
Yeah, I'm open to it. I just, I don't know why we would deviate from what we already have established. That's all. I mean, if, if there's a good logic behind it, I, I just don't know, I don't know that the top five cities line up with that list that we currently use for our administrative staff citywide. And I just think that that, those comparables, I mean, they were vetted, there's reasons for them, obviously, I don't know what they are specifically, but they're comparable in jurisdiction size and other pieces, but I would just say be consistent with what we're already receiving. Plus, there's already points of contact to get the information. Might make it more easy as well.
Or I could leave it up to each council member to identify which cities they feel are, are comparable, and when we have that discussion, that's a part of their responsibility to get that information.
Can I add to what I was saying?
Sure.
Is, is all, my, my overall goal is, as I sat, I sit here as a council member representing the city, and I already stated to our citizens that my goal is to make sure all our, our employees meet the 75 percentile. I haven't, I don't have the tools to know where our staff stands. That's all I'm asking for. I, I'm not a, a professional at knowing what they should make, you know, what their income should be and, and where they stand. I just want to have a tool to be fair with my decision. So that, I'm not trying to make this difficult. It's just we didn't have that tool in the past, and, you know, a lot of city employees are looking at us right now and hoping that we're very fair, and, and that's what I'm trying to be, fair with all our employees.
Councilmember Long?
My button was on for the prior topic with-
Okay. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. At some point, we did have that tool. I know at some point in the past nine years, we, we did have 75th percentile data from other cities, and I don't know how we obtained that, but I think if we look back, we can find it. And I just want to say, as we're collecting this information, we have to remember that our office has three unique positions. None of, they're not the same, and I would bet no other person that works in a council office in the state of Florida is exactly like one of ours. The positions that we created are unique. James is different than Lisa. So if we're looking at 75th percentile, it's going to be hard with five points of data to come up with good information. That's all.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. City manager, you mentioned that you have a tool you use for non-bargaining. Is that something that's just readily available for us? If we could see the administrative, you know, rankings and would determine which ones they are, and that, wouldn't we be close?
We, we have a leadership, we have, we have two types of evaluations. One for bargaining unit employees, and then one for management and middle, executive management and middle management. So one is more geared towards characteristics and traits, you know, judgment, attendance, things of that nature. And then the, the leadership one is more geared to goal, goal-oriented and outcomes. So the non-bargaining one typically, depending on the nature of the position we're evaluating, because we do have employees that are non-bargaining because they're managerial or confidential in nature, but they're not necessarily executive in nature as well.
No, my, my point was, I thought it was more around the numerics of it, is that to, to get to Councilmember Shepard's point about being at the 75th percentile, when you're dealing with the non-bargaining compensation, do you have a tool for the-
Oh.
-the compensation piece?
Yeah, so, so that, the 75th percentile is a range discussion, not an individual salary discussion. So we could definitely look at the ranges of the positions in the office to determine if they are set at the 75th percentile. Where an employee falls between that is a different discussion.
Right. I think that's what Councilmember Shepard was getting to. Where is there a, a, a data set-
Yeah, we can do-
-that says, hey, here's what people in this role make across the, these cities in those types of positions?
We, we can obtain that for you.
When they start.
We can do that.
Okay. I just thought if there's something we don't have to manufacture new, if we've already got it.
I, I don't know if, I don't know if the council roles in their entirety were selected in the non-bargaining. We did try to get positions in the attorney's office, positions in the auditor's office. I can see if we had any positions in the city council office. But if we don't have it, we can, we can do it. If you all want that.
I apologize. I, I didn't mean this to turn into something really difficult. I know we're going to use our own discretion as well. It's just I want to make sure that we're, we're doing right by everyone.
Mayor, would that be okay as it relates to your thought about using the top 10 cities and grabbing the five that are a city manager style, you know, format?
We can do whatever you like. I, I, I was trying to find a simple, quicker solution, since we only have about three to four weeks, you know, to get the data before we're going to make the decision on the second.
May, maybe it's easier. What I'm looking for is what's the starting number for somebody in their position? Now, they are all worth more than the starting number, but it gives me, at least when I'm evaluating a gauge, like someone in that position starts at this number and after years, and like city manager stated, with their accomplishments and things like that. We just, to have some kind of gauge.
I agree. I agree.
I'm, I'm not looking for anything crazy.
Well, it sounds like that the city manager volunteered, and, and is what I heard, to provide some data for council on our-
I heard the same thing down there.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure you heard it down there, and we'll be looking for that information, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, sir, for that volunteerism.
When you're speaking up.
Yeah. I know you're always a team player, and we appreciate that.
You say you're the government, you're here to-
Yeah. So to summarize, to summarize, the council members that are, that are assigned to Ms. Williams, they're going to do her evaluation. The council members assigned to Ms. Grilin, Griglin are going to do hers, and she is going to do James's evaluations. If any of us have input and want to provide that input on, on James, we have that opportunity to do so. So is that, is that the will of the council?
Will they be doing their own self-evaluation too?
Boy.
Thanks, yeah.
Is that, is it, we want to do that? Okay. We, we may need to have a break here soon, so.
A mental break.
Yeah. All right. So do you want them to do a self-evaluation, Mr. Councilmember Hayden?
Every employee that does our character working in the government or the private sector should do their own evaluation.
Okay.
We don't know what we might do.
All right, let's start up here with Ms. Cosden, or Councilmember Cosden, I'm sorry. Self-evaluation, yes or no?
I need to be convinced. I mean, like, I know, you don't want to have a big discussion right now.
Would you want to tell your employer how well you thought you did?
Yes, I, I always do, yes.
There, you think he might not notice?
All right. So we got a yes, a yes, a yes, sure.
Sure.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I think we got a consensus. I'm not asking any more questions. But I will need a motion for the special meeting on October 7th, I'm sorry, 2nd, at 3:00 P.M. in Conference Room 220, where we will be evaluating the city auditor's evaluation and the compensation element of our staff only in that meeting as well. So I will need a, I see, Mr. City Manager, if you're reneging, then I'm not answering on your light.
I'm, I'm not. I'm only asking for a clarification on behalf of my staff. So you are all talking about an evaluation for COLA?
What we are doing.
But you're, you're, you, from your staff? What you are asking from us to have a 75th percentile for a possible range adjustment? I would like to know what time, because those are two different things.
Yeah.
So is it okay for us to take a couple of weeks, get the data, run the number, and have it, or are you looking for a, a time certain, because they're two different things?
Yeah, I think our meeting is on October 7th. I think what we are looking is only, oh, I'm second, I'm sorry. I think the only thing we're looking at is where's the 75th percentile? From there, we'll make a decision either on compensation, COLA, how we want to achieve that.
I, I know what I'm saying is I could, if, you, so you want that by the 2nd, or do, I can deliver that on the 15th, and you can still make that adjustment later? You can reallocate their range to the 75th, irrespective of the COLA.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out for my staff what our deadline is.
Okay. I think if you have the information to us by the September 27th, which is Friday, when we will be getting all of our evaluations together, I think September 27th, that will give council ample time to review that data by the October 2nd meeting. Thank you. All right. I think we made it. So we, so we still need that motion, eh?
So moved.
Or 2nd?
Thank you.
All right, so Councilmember Cosden, to clarify, the motion is we're going to have a special meeting October 2nd at 3:00 P.M., Conference Room 220. The two topics of discussion only is, one is the evaluation and any compensation for the city auditor, and the second topic is for count, compensation discussion on, on our office staff.
Yes.
Second, agree?
Second agrees.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Adice, Motion Carry.
Mr. City Attorney, report.
Nothing.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Mr. City Manager, report.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Let me get to that part of the agenda again for time and place of future meetings. Which is item 13 of the agenda, 13A. We have a committee of the whole scheduled for Wednesday, September 11th at 10:30 a.m. here in council chambers, and we have a special meeting. The Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Thursday, September 12th, 2024, beginning on, at 5:05 p.m. here in council chambers, and that will be our first public hearing. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.